The meeting in Erie County Council will come to order. Please rise from the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Carol, the optional prayer.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let us pray. When we are overwhelmed, when we miss opportunities, when we need to renew our spirit, when we have an urgent thirst for peace and justice, help us to draw strength from God and others around us. Help us to see the prospects and good choices that we have. Remind us of our reasoning to be here and help us to renew and move forward in our duties. We ask in the name of our Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Mr. Cliff Roca.
Mr. Anderson?
Here.
Mrs. Fatika?
Here.
Dr. Faust?
Here.
Mr. Horton?
Here.
Mrs. Law?
Here.
Mr. Rastetter?
Here.
Chairman Leon?
Here.
Hearing of the public, those that have called in, who receive five minutes to speak, anyone else receives three minutes. Three people that have called in even though they might not be on the agenda. Mr. Barnes, your first one up.
Good evening, Council, Chairman, guests. Randy Barnes, I reside in Dr. Faust's district. And we talked last time about trust, and taxpayers have to have trust that our elected officials will oversee those tax dollars in a way that they benefit society and not just individuals. And the reason why we talk about this trust is, and I want to go back to this Erie County Gaming Revenue Authority that I think we're coming up on about $50 million that it's given away in the past eight, nine years. And I'm not so sure we should brag about the $50 million because how many of those metrics have we improved on? Have we improved in poverty? Have we improved in job creation? Have we improved in... We know that Erie was named one of the worst places for minorities to grow up in, specifically black people. So when we've given away $50 million by Erie County Gaming Revenue Authority, what do we have to show for it? Well, I can tell you that we've spent $40,000, $50,000 on a motorcycle rally of Erie County taxpayers' money. Yeah, about $40,000 in the past two years we've given so that we're on the shore could be successful. The taxpayers have put that money up. We know that we've paid Mr. Wood nearly a million dollars in all these years. We know that we paid Mr. Wood, no, Mr. Wood paid himself back on March of 2017 when he took a tuition reimbursement of $5,604. Called it February Tuition Reimbursement. And we know that 47 days later, Mr. Wood took $5,527 check made out to himself for professional development. Now, what we have here is a case of manipulating the books. But it's an obvious manipulation. This person has not even tried to hide it. Not like the person at DA's office who got charged for manipulating the books and benefiting from that, got charged, criminally charged. This person, apparently, from what I can read, it looks like they manipulated the books and said, "One month is one thing," but then tried to fool us all. Well, they fooled all of seven of you because I haven't heard no outrage. I've heard no outrage from the administration. He's fooled us all, all of you. Hasn't fooled me. Because I see when someone says $5,604 for a fall tuition reimbursement, and 47 days later, they say they want a $5,527 check for professional development, someone's trying to manipulate the books. Who do you think is trying to manipulate the books? Do you think it was Mr. Wood's secretary who thought that we should change the wording? Do you think it was Mr. Wood's other associates in there that thought they should change the wording? Or do you think it was Mr. Wood who said, "One month you can call it tuition reimbursement, but I'm getting a little heat, so let's call it professional development"? No one will ever guess. Come on. If it wasn't our money, it would be funny, and I can joke about it because I've thought about this long and hard. But come on, gang. We pay this man a million dollars. We give him $100,000 because he doesn't want his insurance. We give him tens of thousands of dollars for, I don't know if it's a tuition reimbursement or is it professional development? And then we let this Erie County Gaming Revenue decide to create a loan fund. They want to compete with the Erie County General Authority. And we know from this loan fund, the Northeast Dairy Queen benefited from this loan fund. The Northeast Dairy Queen. Does the Northeast, does any Dairy Queen need taxpayer-supported money to rehab and get new picnic tables and rehab their Dairy Queen? You know why the Northeast Dairy Queen got money from EKRA? Because on the board, there was a member who owned another Dairy Queen. Of course, if you're on the board of EKRA, you have control of a lot of things, like millions of dollars. So if you're on the board of EKRA and you own a Dairy Queen, and your friend in Northeast owns a Dairy Queen, it's a natural, "Hey, we'll get you a loan. Don't tell anyone." But it's right on the paper. It's so obvious. Why is it so obvious to me, but it's not obvious to the seven of you? Why is it not obvious to the administration? Is it because we want to overlook because we think Mr. Wood is the best we can get? Is he the best we can get? We don't know because we've only ever had one guy that can give away $50 million.
Mr. Barnes?
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Next is Fred Winnicky. Hope I pronounced that right, Fred.
Close enough. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, thank you so much for your time. My name is Fred Winnicky. I am in District Seven. I'm a resident of Fairview, and I'm also running for the county council position for District Number Seven. Dr. Faust, I'd like to reach out and thank you last meeting for raising your objection to the wasting of $15,000 of taxpayer money at the request of our county executive to do this study, do more research on the effect of Erie County Community College. And to your point, that was $15,000 of taxpayer money we spent for a study that has zero bearing on whether we get a community college here in Erie. As I meet with constituents in District Seven, I'm going to share with you, they're mad. They're angry at spending and wasting taxpayer money on things that we don't need to be spending money on. As I talk to constituents within District Seven, they all share the same, or the majority of them share the same view that I do, that this Erie County Community College is not good for Erie County. In Erie County, and I'll just read off a couple of the schools and education centers we have in Erie, we have Mercyhurst has two campuses here in Erie County. We have Gannon University, Edinburgh University with two campuses, Penn State Baron, LeCom Medical and Dental, Erie Institute of Technology, Fortis Institute, the list goes on and on and on and on. We don't have a lack of resources for training the folks in our community. We don't need to bring on this additional debt. I had the opportunity to speak with our mayor a few weeks ago, and he said to me, "You know, Fred, this Erie County Community College, it's mostly paid for already." Well, mostly paid for, to me, indicates that there's some debt out there that we're not covering on this concept of an Erie County Community College. Who's going to pay that difference? Are we going to go back to our citizens and our constituents and say, "Ladies and gentlemen, we brought on this burden and we can no longer afford to pay for it, and in order to do so, we're going to raise your tax dollars"? We can't afford to do that. We see it here in the city of Erie. These tax dollars are so high that folks are moving out of the city. That, ladies and gentlemen, is a serious, serious problem. We have businesses here in Erie that are ready, willing, and able to train folks for the job openings that they currently have. We have apprenticeships out there. If you want to become an electrician, there's apprenticeship programs out there for that. You want to become a plumber, you can do that. There are plenty of opportunities for education out there other than this Erie County Community College. The other thing I'd like to touch on briefly is the Brideway Capital. And forgive me, I was not able to dig into too much detail of it. It's kind of sketchy exactly what exactly is going on there, and I hope to have the opportunity to do a little more digging. Best I can tell, over the last eight to 10 years, we've given them around $12 million at a return rate of, what, 1% to 3% return on that investment in order for them to take that money and loan it out to other companies to help them grow their businesses. And as near as I can tell from their website, here in Erie, here in Erie County, we've only had four or five businesses that have had that opportunity or taken advantage of that. The rest of it are businesses outside of Erie community. And why are we sending our taxpayer money to a company that's in Pittsburgh? I'm sure here in our Erie community, we've got smart men and women that own businesses that are in charge of investment where we can take our money and get a better return on that investment. I can't seem to see where our return on that investment is. I don't see any numbers out there that says, "We loaned them $12 million, and here's the money we got back from that." Can anyone share with me where that money is? I don't know. I can tell you that the constituents of District Seven want to know. They want to know where that money is. Thank you very much.
Crystal Lee Pack?
No. I always have a trail of teenagers with me, seems like. Good evening, council. My name is Crystal Lee Pack. I am with Youth Leadership Institute of Erie. I am the Youth Program Service Director or Coordinator. Here we have our, some of our students representing YLI and our Youth and Government program. Earlier this year, I told you of what things we were doing with the youth. We were teaching them about civics and how to be civically engaged in their community. Also, we were teaching them a little bit about the Constitution and what it meant to actually be the change. How did those changes happen and what was the processes of that? So we took them to, through a process of Youth and Government with the collaboration of the Y, and took them down to Harrisburg where this past weekend, they are about to share those stories of what they were able to do. So I'm going to let them introduce themselves and tell you a little bit about their experience.
So I'm Jolena Konenzik. I'm a junior at Villamarie Academy, and this past weekend, I went to the Youth and Government Model Legislative Conference where I had the opportunity to be in the Senate House and debate on bills that I liked and try to help pass the bills I liked and try to vote against the bills that I did not like. I actually spoke on a bill in the debate part about lowering the age of abortion, and where I went up, said my name, delegation, and then explained for 30 seconds to a minute why they should vote for this bill. And I think this was just like a great opportunity for me to actually see what I'm going to get into if I were to do this for the rest of my life. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Tyler White. I go to Northwestern Collegiate Academy. Like she said, we went to Harrisburg, and we had a really nice time. We went to Congress, and we got to see what really, what the cases were like, how the judges were the Speaker of the House. And I got to sit, oh, I forgot, his name was Fred, and when we was taking, going through tours and stuff, I saw Ryan Bazzaro's name, and he commented on the Instagram page, "Hey, that seat looks very comfortable for you." But I honestly think that if we keep pushing on these good bills, like against abortion or immigrants and stuff like this, stuff like that, I think America can be better. And I told the Speaker of the House that, too. I said, "If we really just focus on..." I know this is not like we're really passing these bills. We just getting to feel how, what is going to be in the future. But I think if we actually put our minds into it and get stuff done, the outcome will be awesome. So I thank you guys for listening and having us over.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Trayvon Bibbs. I go to Agora Cyber Charter School, and this past weekend, we went, like he said, we went to the Capitol Building. And while I was in committee, I had the chance to get, we wrote a bill for our delegation, and I had gotten that passed. So, you know, it was like, it showed me how it was going to be like if I ever wanted to do like an internship or I wanted to get a job over there. There was a very specific set of rules. You couldn't just, you know, like, to go to the bathroom, you had to point of personal privilege, and then, yeah. So it really showed me what to do if I ever wanted to work there. And I think the Gold House passed more bills. We did more than the Blue House, and I think it was like the most bills we've ever passed, ever. And, yeah, thank you for listening. Thank you for listening.
Thank you.
Thanks, Trey.
Hello, my name is Hrishim Raisayef. I go to Erie High School. And like they all said, we went to a trip to Harrisburg this weekend, and to be honest, I kind of enjoyed it. I actually get to speak for the first time, and I was scared at first, but I kind of got used to it. And I was, I was doing, I was representing a bill that we made. It was about police brutality. It's basically supposed to help the citizens from getting injured while at the same time helping police officers from losing their jobs. We came up with interesting ideas, like making, like helping police officers know better about their community and adding body care to, I mean, adding body cameras to their shoulders and stuff like that to show both sides of the story. And the hotel was pretty nice, too. And, yeah, thank you all for inviting us here, and I am glad you all listened.
Thank you.
Thank you.
First of all, can we just give a round of applause for the kids because they did such a good job. And I'm not an easy teacher all the time, and I push and I push and I push and I demand high standards, and I'll tell you what, amen, Adam. So I wanted to share with you some pictures here, too, as well. So this is, I'm sorry, this are the pretty much signatures that they had taken at the house. And then we also had a chance to meet the Secretary of Pardons, and he was able to tell the story of his testimony and his story of how he was actually an inmate and then became a Secretary of Pardons as he, you know, went back to school and got his life together and everything. But just many thanks for, you know, supporting youth leadership and our endeavors to bring civic engagement and humanities back to our kids and be able to give them ownership in what they so richly deserve. And if kids don't feel like they are attached to anything, then they're going to attach to the wrong things. So a community that comes together will stay together, and that's what we're doing. So we're building the community to take care of that village, to take care of the children. So I thank you for your time. Oh, and speaking of the village, I'm sorry. Global Youth Service Day, April 27th. It's the last Saturday of this month. We're getting together at East Middle School again. No, I never sleep. And we are going to have a teen forum as one of our highlights of the program for the youth advocacy. Say it, Say It Loud is our theme. So we're getting together with different folks around Erie to represent different cultures and everything, and same with the students. And they're going to have, you know, topics and questions and no stone left unturned, basically. And all the kids that are going to be in the audience are going to be able to come up and just plug away and get their questions answered. And then also, we're going to do with AAUW, a youth legislative kind of gerrymandering kind of thing, looking at the importance of, you know, equal representation and how it affects their education, their funding, and so on and so forth. So these kids are really stepping up to the plate, and I just want to thank you very much for your time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman? Yes. I know that we normally, after people have spoken, citizens to be heard, we make no comments, but I just want to briefly commend Edison and Crystal and the youth leadership, and in particular, the students that went to Harrisburg. Continue doing what you're doing. It's important. It makes a difference, and there are people out there that are paying attention. Thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to be heard? Anyone else? Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the approval of the previous minutes. I'll entertain...
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second by Dr. Faust, second by Mr. Horton. Comments? Roll call in the meeting.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes. Next on the agenda, report of county officials, county executive, and his or her designee. Finance Committee, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On April 11th, the Finance Committee met and put forward the agenda tonight. No old business, but new business, A through L, and including M, which will be additionally added on tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That concludes my report.
Thank you. Any comments? If not, Personnel Committee, Mrs. Fatika?
There was no Personnel Committee as there was nothing on the agenda for this evening. That concludes my report.
Okay, thank you. Next is Andre.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to once again make a few comments about the Erie County Community College application. It's been often said of what we have, but I can tell you what we don't have. Or in some places, what we have, because what we have is an aging workforce. They call it a grained workforce. What we have is record poverty, and what we have is an unskilled workforce for the jobs of tomorrow. So we submitted this, we, the citizens of Erie County, submitted via the administration, under the county executive's charge, we submitted our completed community college application to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania's Board of Education. We did that in accordance with the State's Community College Act and Erie County's Ordinance Number 27 of June 2017. Our application has in fact been submitted, and it has been nearly two years since we originally submitted the app, and we are anxiously awaiting an answer. We feel that our application is a strong application, and we feel that on its merit, Erie County is eligible and should be authorized, even allowed, to proceed in the establishment of a standalone Erie County Community College. Our application should be carried through to a vote by the Board of Education in accordance with Ordinance 27. Those that oppose, i.e. Erie Rural Regional College proponents, they wrongly suggest, even falsely state, that the establishment of a standalone community college would be a duplication of efforts, which is, I guess, the alternative facts. Because the fact is that although the founders of the Erie Rural Regional College continue to refer to themselves as a community college, the legislation that created them specifically prohibits them, Matt, from doing so because they are two entirely different vehicles. Distant learning, apprenticeships, as you've heard about this evening, programs, apprenticeship programs, a few scholarships, they're all good, but the data has proven in 2006, we proved it, in 2010, we proved it, and we proved it again in 2016. And what we proved is that Erie County in fact does need and would benefit from a standalone Here in Erie County, all those, that patchwork of things that we just heard about, the distance learning, the apprenticeship programs, the on-the-job training, they're all good, but like I said, the data proves that this piecemeal patchwork of well-intended workforce programs and initiatives will not be sufficient to meet the needs or the scale of the problem here in Erie County. The truth is, companies tried to fill the void themselves because sadly, Erie County has been left behind in that educational spectrum. The data suggests that blacks, people of color, new Americans in poverty-stricken households do not fare well under the distant learning model. Minorities of color clearly have more obstacles to overcome, such as student loan debt, lower starting salaries, and less opportunities. Minorities have more ground to make up after 200 years of slavery and 400-plus years and counting of Jim Crow. We find ourselves still fighting Brown versus the Board of Education. Education is the civil rights issue of our day. Our children in the Erie School District are still experiencing separate, sadly, but not equal, treatment. Students don't have adequate technology, distance learning. Our test scores in the district are nowhere near where they need to be. Our children aren't provided the tools necessary to compete in today's global economy. Now, last Sunday, the Erie Times News ran an article that states that over 50% of today's jobs or vocations in the Erie County area will be automated in 20 years, resulting in massive layoffs and loss of jobs, virtually destroying our local trained, skilled workforce and negatively impacting our local economy. The truth of the matter is, the Erie Rural Regional College only has 78 students spread throughout nine counties, and Erie County has enough people and certainly enough need to support both vehicles. If this community is forced to choose, we have spoken collectively, this legislative body here agreed to be the local sponsor to a standalone Erie County Community College. We have spoken collectively as to what our needs are and what opportunities we feel our youth, our displaced workers, working men and women who need remedial help, working men and women who need a hand up, working men and women who need an opportunity that could potentially lift themselves and/or their families out of poverty and jumpstart the next generation to a whole new world of possibilities and dreams and aspirations that could and would be a blessing to our entire beloved community. We're asking the Board of Education, help Erie County residents, particularly our youth and our displaced workers, help us pick up a book or a skill instead of painkillers or a gun. Help them pick up a skill or honorable occupation. When we raise up men and women through education and employment and sprinkle in just a little bit of faith, we make the world and our community a better place for all. Mr. Chairman, I think that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. Anyone else need to report? I have a couple of minor comments. I think we all received an email on the Medical Assistant Transportation Program. It's a reference to House Bill 1677 from the state, and it seems to indicate that we may be, because of the fact that they're going to try to contract services out, we may lose funding through our lift program, the MTA, as much as 2.7 million annually. I don't know all of the particulars about it, but I intend to start looking into it to find out just exactly what is going on. There are quite a few counties right now that are sending in resolutions opposing this particular move through the state. Like I said, I'll have to find out more about it. And I was going to talk about our, how non-political we were when we picked our secretary this particular time, but I'm going to leave that go for now. Thank you. Next on the agenda, there's no old business, there's new business. Uh, first of all, do I have a motion to make second readings out of, uh, Ordinance 16, 17, 18, and 19?
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Horton?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Anderson. Comments? Roll call on the, uh, on the motion.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Next, I also believe we need a motion, even though, because it wasn't on the agenda, to put Resolution 17 on the agenda, and also the, uh, appointment, uh, reappointment of, uh, Pat Carrera to the, uh, to the, yeah, where are we going to?
To the Erie County Convention Center Authority.
So moved, Chairman.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for that?
So moved. So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Horton. Roll call.
On the motion, Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Okay, let's go into new business. Uh, second reading of Ordinance, uh, Number 16, and title only, please, Mr. Clerk.
A second reading of Ordinance Number 16, 2019, 11th, 2019 General Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $21,598 AOPC grant and new line item for court video security.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Anderson, seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Comments? Roll call.
On Ordinance 16, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Next, second reading, title only, Ordinance Number 17, Mr. Clerk.
A second reading of Ordinance Number 17, 2019, 2nd, 2019 Library Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of a $700 grant for the Teen Reading Lounge.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Horton, seconded by Mr. Anderson. Comments? Roll call.
On Ordinance 17, Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Next, second reading of Ordinance 18, and title only, please.
A second reading of Ordinance Number 18, 2019, 3rd, 2019 Library Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $12,673 grant donation from the Erie County Library Foundation and the Escher Klugewich Library Fund.
So moved.
Second.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Anderson? Do I have a second? Kathy?
Second.
Seconded by Kathy Fatika. Comments? Roll call on Ordinance Number 18.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Second reading of Ordinance Number 19, and title only.
A second reading of Ordinance Number 19, 2019, 4th, 2019 Library Fund Budget, supplemental appropriation of $25,880 in state aid for district center library activities.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mr. Horton, seconded by Mr. Anderson. Comments? Roll call.
On Ordinance 19, Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Next is Resolution Number 9, and title only, please.
Resolution Number 9, 2019, approval of tentative five-year lease agreement with Moxie Three Real Estate LLC for office space located at 901 West 12th Street, Erie, Pennsylvania, for Erie County Records Warehouse.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Dr. Faust, seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Comments? Roll call.
On Resolution 9, Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Without objection, move to approve Resolutions 10 through 16 in, uh, one vote. They're all very, they're really identical, except they're just exonerating taxes in different municipalities and different school districts. It's all pretty well straightforward. Uh, we do these quite often, and we're always last in line, so they've all already been approved by the school district and the local municipality.
Second. Comments? Roll call on, uh, the motion.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes.
Next is, uh, Resolution 17.
Chairman, if, if we could, could we read it fully since it's, it's, it's not too-
Read it in its entirety.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Resolution Number 17, 2019, urging Commonwealth and county action to bring Erie Coke Corporation in strict compliance with all applicable environmental regulations. Whereas the Erie Coke Corporation suffered significant wastewater spills on March 19 and 31, 2019, just the latest in a history of problems and violations of environmental regulations which continue to place the health of Erie County citizens at risk. And whereas the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, DEP, issued an administrative order on February 4, 2019, demanding that Erie Coke Corporation take action to correct air quality violations it believes to be, quote, "ongoing and continuous over the last 18 months," end quote. And whereas the DEP and Erie Coke entered into a consent decree to settle a series of unaddressed violations by the company from 2008 to 2010. And whereas a study by the Erie, by the Pennsylvania Department of Health showed that between 2008 and 2012, adults in Erie County have higher-than-average rates of lung and bronchus cancers, further amplified by the Erie County Department of Health's assessment in 2018, which showed high cancer rates in those, quote, "locations," continued through 2014. And whereas Erie County greatly values industry and the extensive economic benefits of employment, however, we cannot trade those benefits for clean air and water. Desiring the health of our citizens stand as a beacon to ourselves, our visitors, to prospective residents, and to future generations, along with our sparkling shores, sporting life, the arts, and other attractions. Resolved, the County Council of Erie County hereby supports the issuance of letters to the Pennsylvania Department of Environmental Protection, demanding that the Erie Coke Corporation come into strict compliance with all applicable environmental regulations. Be it further resolved that the Erie County Solicitor and the Erie County Department of Health, one, use all powers at their disposal to pressure Erie Coke to adhere to air and land pollution regulations. Two, press DEP to pursue all enforcement with vigor to address a problem that goes beyond city borders and is affecting all Erie County residents.
So moved.
Second.
By Dr. Faust, seconded by Mrs. Fatika. Comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just very quickly, uh, this resolution, uh, as I said in my remarks last week, I don't want Erie Coke to shut down. I don't want them to leave. I want them to comply with environmental laws that are in place, uh, so that they can safely operate and the people of Erie County can safely live, uh, near that plant. A strong environment, in my opinion, is good business. Uh, if you have polluters and you have a corporation, if you have a company that continues to pollute and create environmental hazards, uh, that seriously curtails the ability to track business and to attract residents to come to our communities, community. The days when polluters can act unchecked are over, and communities, to their everlasting, uh, credit, are beginning to speak up and vociferous, vociferously speak up and demand that these corporations follow the law. I think Erie Coke, for far too long, has just poked, uh, their business in the collective eyes of the Erie community. Uh, Mrs. Law especially spoke to that with her time as being the liaison of the Health, uh, Board last week. Uh, so I would hope that we could find unanimous support for this, uh, resolution. And I encourage my colleagues to vote for it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Um, Andre, ask for the-
Okay.
I yield to the-
Okay.
I just wanted to thank Dr. Faust for, uh, bringing this to, uh, our table to vote on, and they've done a very good job. He's, uh, he's put a lot, a lot of words and a lot of thought into this resolution. And I hope, too, that we also get a, uh, full complement of vote on this because it, it is a, uh, necessary, uh, point to point out that this company is in, uh, violation and has been in violation. And, um, I think this is a good resolution. Thank you.
Thank you.
Andre?
I echo the sentiments of Dr. Faust and Councilwoman Law. Um, Erie Coke sits along the waterfront in the eastern portion of, uh, District 2, which I represent. Uh, I also reside and live there, and for years. Residents on the east side, uh, have well been aware of the pollutants and the toxins, uh, that they're being exposed to. Uh, Erie Coke, I submit to you for argument, is just the tip of the spear, uh, in that, uh, we seem to be really, really concerned because it's near our water table and our ground table. And we do do a lot of sport fishing, and we have a lot of agriculture here, but I submit to you for argument that along the 12th Street corridor, uh, along those railroad tracks, uh, when, when I was a youth, where the people along East 20th Street had the big, beautiful gardens, were companies like Calsecat and BASF, uh, and many others along that corridor. Not to throw salt on them because I'm not anti-industry, uh, but I am anti, uh, pollution or polluting or top, and, or, uh, toxins that, uh, you know, would be released into the environment, uh, many of them which are carcinogens. It's bad enough that we don't know what's being transported, uh, through that corridor by, by train. Uh, we're just one accident away of finding out. But I would like, uh, I, I, I hope that this resolution, and I don't see why it shouldn't pass unanimously, but I would hope that, uh, in the, not so, in the near future, uh, that we could probably get a letter out, whether we could, to the DEP and ask that, uh, we get some of that monitoring, uh, for some of the other companies, uh, that we know to be polluters as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Anderson?
Mr. Chairman, I want to commend my colleagues, uh, for bringing this resolution forward. Uh, I'm proud, very proud, to have grown up at 541 East Sixth Street. And as I look, uh, across the, uh, the dais here, I think most members of this council, uh, have relations that connect back to the Lower East Side of Erie. Uh, it is our history and it is our heritage. And in the memory of those people, uh, we deserve that this generation and future generations will grow up in a safe environment. We spoke about this on Thursday, and, uh, Councilwoman Fatika certainly is very well aware that in the east side of Erie, particularly Harbor Creek and northeast, is the highest incidence of cancer, uh, in all of Erie County. There's no question, uh, that the, uh, toxins that have been released affect our health. Uh, they affect our environment. They affect our overall economic development because those who want to, uh, have their families reside in a community and those that want to have their businesses here and for the future, uh, want to have their family being able to be in a healthy and safe place. We deserve that. The citizens of Erie County deserve that, and future generations of Erie Canyons deserve that. I'm in full support of this resolution. Uh, and again, uh, thank my colleagues for bringing this forward. And, uh, thank you for, uh, doing what has needed to be done for many years, uh, to bring Erie Coke in compliance. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, go ahead.
Uh, I also grew up on the Lower East Side and then into Lawrence Park. I'm a healthcare professional, and I, I commend city council for their action. I want to thank, uh, Dr. Faust for the excellent way that this resolution is presented. And just simply to say that we need to keep our voices out there and stop the teratogenic effects, um, that, uh, where, where we're not able to control our environment. It's, uh, it's vital.
Can you go now? Oh, I, it looks like I'll have the final say anyway. Uh, I'm a westsider, by the way. Been on the west side all my life, so I can't say I'm from the east side of town.
We won't hold that against you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, well, that's all right. What are you going to do? But I, I grew up near Cascade Foundry, and I don't know if you know how bad that was, that the, in the days that I grew up, or also the, then I moved next to the pattern shop on 19th Street, which was just as bad. But, you know, I, we all, whether westside, eastside, wherever we're from, we all represent the county of Erie. And I believe seriously that I agree with my colleagues, and this should pass unanimously. I don't see any reason why it wouldn't. Any other comments? If not, roll call.
On Resolution 17, Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
A strong yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes. Next, I, do I have-
Mr. Chairman, move to approve the appointment of Pat Carrera to the Erie County Convention Center Authority?
Second. Moved by Dr. Faust, seconded by Mr. Horton. Comments? Roll call on the appointment.
Mrs. Law?
Yes.
Mr. Rastetter?
Yes.
Mr. Anderson?
Yes.
Mrs. Fatika?
Yes.
Dr. Faust?
Yes.
Mr. Horton?
Yes.
Chairman Leon?
Yes. Want to entertain a motion for adjournment?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Stand to adjourn. Thank you.